The line of City Planning Commission. We'll begin with a call to order, roll call. Do we have others coming?
We have Mr. Baffa, Ms. Eisenhower, Mr. Linkowitz are not able to attend this evening, and we don't have our two youth members, Kate Bruhl, I believe, just graduated, and Spencer Angel are absent. But we do have a quorum to proceed.
Excellent, thank you. Second item is approval of minutes from our May 7 meeting. Everyone has had time to read those.
I can vote for his on minutes?
It's been moved and seconded to approve those minutes as read. All those in favor vote aye please. Any opposed? Motion carries. New business for tonight. We've got a number of public hearing items tonight, so I'm glad everyone's here. The first is item 3.1, is actually three applications, number M19-6, Z19-6, and P19-2. These are applications all filed by Roger Bakhta. This is about a request for amendment of a future land use map. The property that we're talking about tonight is on Coach Light Lane, west of North 9th Street, south of I-70. It's in a conservation district now. The request is commercial. There's also a zoning district classification request, and approval of a preliminary plat of a district in that location.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're going to start, as we should, with an analysis for you of what the comprehensive plan shows about this area, and why. And John, if you could go to the Salina Future Land Use Conservation Area map, please. Back in 2010, when the updated comprehensive plan was being developed, there was a land use category created and mapped, and the consultants who helped with preparing the comprehensive plan recognized that we had a fairly large extent of property that was located outside the protection of the city's flood control levee between it and I-70. And in that area is flood plain associated with Mulberry Creek and the Celine River. So, as a starting point, or discussion point, that area that's highlighted in different shades of green there was identified as conservation area. And just to quote the plan, "The conservation land use area represents those areas of Salina and adjacent incorporated Celine County in which development should not be encouraged. The conservation designation generally follows the mapped 100-year floodplain areas within and adjacent to Salina without levee protection. Development should not be encouraged for numerous reasons, most notably to protect natural resources or environmental elements, or because of lack of infrastructure now in the future." Extension of infrastructure, including water sewer and streets, can be expensive, and development will not occur in an urban form. And so, within that category, as we have discussed in previous study sessions, the primary land uses are agriculture, open space, recreation area, and trails. And on the commercial land use side, the plan states that future development of suburban style and large-scale commercial businesses that rely on traffic for their business will continue to locate in two areas, North 9th Street at Interstate 70 and South 9th Street at Magnolia and Schilling Roads. Specialized and niche business should be encouraged to locate in the downtown area. Commercial uses that serve existing and future neighborhoods should be encouraged to develop within mixed-use centers. So, the applicant in this case is Roger Bakhta. He's the prospective purchaser of a six-acre tract of land that's at the west end of where Coach Light Lane terminates west of North 9th and south of I-70. If you could go to the, what's labeled the Bakhta Future Land Use Map, John? So, this is a blown-up version of the comprehensive plan, and you can see that the red area there is directly abutting 9th Street. The red area indicates commercial land use, and it was determined because of the existing commercial uses developed in that area, there was lots of discussion, but that ended up being designated as a commercial land use area. And so, this is the Boselman's Travel Plaza, and then there are two businesses over here. We have development along Diamond Drive, the Petro II is here, and we have a convenience store and McDonald's over here. So, there is, as you can see, it's not that the plan contradicts itself, but the plan points out two things, that large-scale commercial businesses that rely on traffic will continue to locate at North 9th and I-70, and then you also have the conservation area. So, in this area that's at the southwest quadrant of the interchange dates back to the 1970s. That's when development first occurred. It was comprehensively rezoned and remapped after being annexed in 1977. In 1986, the city entered the National Flood Insurance Program, and we adopted flood maps, which designated this as a floodway. In 1990, there was a new zoning district created called C-7 Highway Commercial, and much of the property around this interchange was reclassified as C-7. In May of 2007, there was a 100-year flood on Mulberry Creek, and a farmhouse that was located at 635 Coach Light Lane was damaged by that flood, and it was removed from the site. In 2010, when the plan was adopted, portions of this area were designated conservation area, and portions where there was pre-existing commercial development were designated as commercial on the future land use map. So, this map reflects the end result of that work in 2010. One of the things the Planning Commission did was the initial draft of the plan stated that the term prohibited should be changed to discouraged. So, the initial language was that development, an area in which development should be prohibited, and the Planning Commission changed that to development should be discouraged, and then adopted some criteria. And one of those criteria was proposals to develop property located in a conservation area will be considered if one or more of the following criteria met. One of those criteria is there are existing city utilities in place that are capable of serving the site. And that brings us to 2017, where the Salina Board of Zoning Appeals approved a floodway variance to allow redevelopment of the existing hotel site, which is located right here on Coach Light Lane. And that floodway variance, which was based on a no-rise study prepared by a professional engineer, determined that those hotels could be built in similar footprints to what was there before without increasing flood heights on Mulberry Creek, and also required that those hotel sites be elevated from what was there before. So, your role in this first item, 3.1A, is to decide what you think the preferred vision is for this area. Is this area right, and we're speaking to this conservation area right here, do you think that it is more closely connected to the North 9th Street commercial corridor, justifying an amendment of the conservation area boundary, or is it more closely related to the surrounding conservation area in unincorporated Celine County? So, again, you can see that there's a little bit more development area on this side than this side, and this is Diamond Drive here, and North 9th, north of the interstate there, South 9th, heading down to Thomas Park. So, your options are to reaffirm the existing comprehensive plan boundary. That would maintain that boundary in place. And the other option would be to recommend that this map be amended to shift this boundary from here over to here, but only incorporating that portion, leaving the remainder as conservation area. And so, the future land use map is a guide. It's not carved in stone. It shouldn't necessarily predetermine land use for any specific location. What we're talking about here is just west of this existing commercial area where development was approved in 2017. Some items to consider is it's adjacent to an existing commercial development site. It is inside the existing city limits. The city's already invested in extending utilities to the hotel site, and has also added this area to the city's neighborhood revitalization area. And the other thing we would note is the applicant's engineer has demonstrated that it is technically feasible to develop a portion of this property if compensatory flood storage is created. So, John, we have the 9th and I-70 flood map. If you could please put that up. I don't think this would be any surprise to you that almost everything on there is shaded in some pattern, either blue or the shaded pattern. The shaded pattern is generally the floodway where flood impacts are, is caused by moving floodwater associated with Mulberry Creek. On the north side of I-70, there's flood plain, but that's mostly pooling of water that can't drain anywhere so that it pools up. And then, John, if you could go to the Cow Valley Model Report. You're going to have to blow that up, and maybe even more than that. So, the applicant has retained the services of an engineer, the same engineer that did the flood impact study for the hotel site, the same engineer that prepared the flood insurance rate maps for Salina and Celine County. In the right-hand column, they have run all their cross-sections and their scenarios of what would happen if this property developed as proposed by the applicant with compensatory storage. And as you can see, the right column indicates what the flood elevation would be on Mulberry Creek post-development versus what it is now, and their analysis showed that at all those cross-sections, there would be no change in water surface elevation. And so, if you want to scroll to the conclusion, John, "The proposed grading plan did not show any adverse effects to the water surface elevation in the proposed condition model for either scenario." If you want to go to the next page, please. "The engineer's conclusion is that development at this site, based on the grading plan, will not adversely impact the water surface elevations of the effective FEMA model, and therefore meets the criteria for a no-rise definition." So, this is not, this commission is not to get to that level of detail, but we wanted to present this because this isn't just speculation on the applicant's part. The applicant has invested in the services of a licensed professional engineer to see if this is technically feasible. And so, the, I think we have it in your packets, and I also have it here in mine, but the, under compensatory storage, it says it is, it is possible to offset the rise in flood heights for a proposed development by improving the carrying capacity of the stream channel by removing existing obstruction from the floodway or other improvements. "The applicant must provide an engineering analysis of the proposed compensating improvements, and must prove that the development neither raises the flood elevation or causes additional flood hazard to adjacent properties." So, John, is the next slide from this, the grading plan? Okay, so go to the next. So, for the benefit, you might have to slide it up just a little bit. For the benefit of the commission, this is Mulberry Creek. This is a very large excavated water storage area that would be in use to impound water and capture any floodwater from Mulberry Creek that went out of its banks, and then material excavated from this area here would be used. If you could slide it towards the top. Then, this portion of the site would be what is proposed for development. This would be an extension of Coach Light Lane, this being I-70 up here. So, the concept that the applicant is proposing to utilize is what is referred to as compensating improvements, that you elevate and fill this area, and you maintain the capacity of the channel by increasing the storage capacity in that area. And in order to develop property that's in the floodway, as was done with the hotels next door, you have to get an engineer to certify that there will be no rise in flood levels, and there is an engineer who's performed an analysis and determined that if this plan were carried out in this fashion, that this site is potentially buildable from a technical standpoint. But that is, that is a technical question, and what we are talking about at this point is what the comprehensive plan vision is for this property. So, John, if you could go back to the future land use map, and we will pause there and address any questions that you have. But that is the big picture map, and all the lime-green area there is what's considered conservation area. Everything that's red or purple is considered to be commercial or employment area. And so, you can, you can decide whether, you know, I don't, because there was, this had historically been used as a farmhouse and all that, you can see that there's bigger commercial area here than on this quadrant, and, again, we're not proposing to change any of this area out here. It's a very defined incremental expansion of the commercial area that the applicant is being, is requesting. So, I will pause to see if you have any questions about the concept of the conservation area. I think we've had some discussions about that on the North 9th Street corridor, and we do have the applicant and has an engineer here with him if you have technical questions.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Commissioners, do you have questions regarding this particular application?
Are there going to be three hotels built that's proposed?
Well, at this point, we're just talking about whether or not the land use map should be amended. We'll get to the plat later.
Sorry.
That's fine. We haven't heard that yet, though. Other questions? No? If not, Mr. Bakhta? Do you want to approach? Give your name and address, please.
I'm Roger Bakhta, 1220 West North Street, Salina, Kansas.
Thank you, sir.
Just before Roger begins, just for, in answer to Mr. Story's question, this is the property directly to the east on Coach Light Lane of Mr. Bakhta's property, and this is the plan approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and also by Kansas Division of Water Resources, and this building is under construction, no, excuse me, this is under construction. And so, the, this is future development, this is Coach Light Lane. So, you can go back to the future land use map, John, but that should answer your question, Mr. Story.
Any points you'd like to make?
Just trying to see, you know, if I can get that little area, you know, developed, and, you know, get some more businesses up north, which, you know, we need, Salina needs, you know? My biggest thing is, you know, north side has been, you know, ignored for a long time, and I'm just trying to get, you know, I could have went somewhere south, but trying to, you know, bring more business up north.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Bakhta? No? Thank you, sir. Any questions for, I take it you're the engineer? Any questions? No? Questions for staff? We don't need to have many questions tonight. This was, this is pretty simple. No? This is a public hearing, so are there any people from the public that would like to speak, or have questions or comments on this application? If not, I'll close that part of the hearing, and bring it back up to here. So, Commissioners, this would be step one of three that are requested. I suppose in order to do the other two, we'd have to agree to a land use map amendment.
And I, I did, some of you may or may not understand that the, what the city has is it's called a Neighborhood Revitalization Area Program, and certain portions of the city, including the hotel site right here, a owner who owns property and invests in that property can potentially be eligible for a property tax rebate. And so, in our Neighborhood Revitalization Area, an applicant would start out with a base property tax level. So, one of my favorite examples is Riverside Plaza, where now resident 600. That was a $12,000 vacant, somewhat derelict lot. It was purchased, redeveloped into that housing project. At the close of the housing project, it was valued at a little over $3 million assessed valuation. The way the program works is the improvement pays as property tax, and then the city rebates the difference between the pre-construction and the post-construction value for the first five years. So, for the first five years, that building and facility was paying property tax as if it were a, still a vacant lot. And I, I bring that up is because for better or for worse, the city has essentially followed this boundary here, except they went to the city limits here, and so the Neighborhood Revitalization Area boundary includes all of this area in red, and just happens to include that as well. And I don't, don't, can't say that it was a completely conscious or unconscious decision, but it just made sense to take the boundary to the city limit line. And all I know is this property was annexed in 1971. It's been in the city limits since that time, but it was primarily used as a residence and a farmhouse until 2007, and is now vacant.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion, or do we need more information?
I make a motion that we approve application M19-6, changing this from conservation area to future commercial.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the future land use map to future commercial use. All those in favor vote aye please. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Who was the second on that motion? Mr. Lang?
Mr. Lang. That would bring us to application Z19-6, which is a request to change in zoning district from A1 to C-7.
And I hope the commission understands staff's logic in how we set, set this up because item 3.1A is kind of the big-picture question about how you envision this property. The second item is a request to rezone the property from its present agricultural status to C-7 Highway Commercial. C-7 Highway Commercial, as you can see on this map, is the predominant zoning around this interchange, Petro II and some of the hotels here, and Valero, and on this side, the Boselman's Plaza, and this right here. And the C-7 district was created by, at the impetus of the Planning Commission, to try to help protect interstate interchanges around the community by trying to preserve those areas for uses that really do need access to highway traffic and serve the traveling public. And so, the primary focus is on things like restaurants, travel plazas, hotels. And so, your role in this case is to determine whether this tract is more suitable for commercial development or continued agricultural use. So, we've, we've highlighted for you the aspects of the C-7 district. Even though it has a higher number than C-5 and C-6, the number of uses permitted is much much smaller. Again, that's to try to limit the uses to things like restaurants and motels as principal uses. It is an area that requires front yard landscaping. In this particular location, we have no residential to buffer from, so the development will, the landscaping will focus on the front yard along Coach Light Lane for any future development. We believe the applicant is trying to focus on eating and drinking establishments and perhaps a motel to serve the traveling public. As far as the suitability of the site of the development, we pointed out to you that this is map floodway, and that irrespective of whether a property is shown as future commercial or future conservation area, the floodway rules are still in effect. And a floodway is the channel of a water course in adjacent land which must be reserved in order to discharge the hundred-year flood without increasing the water surface elevation more than one foot. And so, as a general rule, new construction is prohibited in the floodway unless a certification is provided by a registered professional engineer demonstrating that encroachments will not result in any increase in flood levels. And so, there is a process for that, and what we indicated is based on the analysis performed by the civil engineer, the applicant believes that this property is, in fact, suitable for commercial development. If the building sites are elevated and compensatory storage, floodwaters of Mulberry Creek is provided as proposed. So given its proximity to I-70 and its interstate exposure, Mr. Bakhta believes that this is more suitable for interstate-oriented commercial development than agricultural use. As we noted, the area extending from the levee out to I-70 was included or added to our neighborhood revitalization area in 2015, and that was included in our latest 2018 update. And so, staff views this as a logical and proportional extension of the existing C-7 zoned area on Coach Light Lane. And we think the one thing that is critical in terms of a finding for the planning commission is one thing the comprehensive plan is trying to discourage is having the city invest in or extend utilities or streets out into a conservation area where they don't presently exist. Here, there has been public utilities, water, and sewer in place since the 1970s, so the city has already made that investment. And so, there is water supply, sanitary sewer, and the storage area provided far exceeds any kind of detention capacity we would have. So just for the commission's information, from KDOT, the I-70 running past this location carries 17,700 vehicles a day, and Knight Street carries a little over 7,000 vehicles a day. This is a major gateway into the community from I-70. And so, Coach Light Lane is considered to be a named public street, and it could be extended to the west to allow a development of this tract. And so, what we noted in, as it relates to the comprehensive plan, is that any consideration of an amendment to the comp plan should be done prior to consideration of a zoning change. So what we have outlined for you, which hopefully you looked at as you were considering the comprehensive plan and future land use, is we have provided for you on pages six and seven, some possible findings that would support rezoning this property to commercial. And that relates to its proximity and orientation to I-70, and its location in the city's revitalization area. We do have an engineer who has determined that it is feasible to develop a portion of this site and still conform with FEMA floodway regulations. We're adjacent to an existing C-7 zone property that is under development. Needed utilities and streets can be extended to serve this six-acre site. We think that an amendment to the plan can be justified in these circumstances due to the location in relation to I-70 and the existing commercial areas. Also on page seven, we highlighted reasons why it might not be desirable to rezone this property. And so, what we tried to do is lay those findings out for you, to let you review those and see which ones you think best fit these circumstances. So on the rezoning question, your first option would be to recommend approval of the request for C-7 zoning, citing the findings you believe that support that. You could recommend that this application be continued or postponed to allow staff or the applicant to provide you with additional information, or you could recommend denial of the application, citing findings that you believe would support denial of the requested change. So based on your recommendation under item 3.1A, then changing the zoning to C-7 would conform with the comprehensive plan as amended, or as you recommended amending it. So that, I'll pause for any questions that you have. But as you can see from the map, this is C-7. This is C-7 all around here, and they would just be extending C-7 to that city limit point, and that is the extent that we see any future development occurring to that area. And so, stopping at the existing city limit line makes some sense, so.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Commissioners, do you have questions regarding the zoning change request?
If we are right now in a flood situation, is that the property flooded down?
I went out last night to check, and it was not. And the city engineer, Mr. Stack, went out earlier today, and it was not. But in full disclosure, John, we do have the photographs from, is it last week or two weeks ago, Dustin? I believe it was two weeks ago. But we want to qualify that by saying that we were standing on the site of the hotel where it's under construction. This is, this sign right here is telling people that this property is proposed for rezoning. What we want to emphasize is that this is the existing condition, and the plan, and I don't know how quickly you can switch back to that, John, but the grading plan or Mr. Bakhta's development plan is to take the, well, the reason that we are standing on high ground there that's not covered is because as part of the approval of the floodway variance for the hotel site, that this area was elevated compared to what it was when the previous hotel occupied the site. And so, what Mr. Bakhta's plan is, is to take an area over here and excavate it and create a large compensatory storage area for this water. And then, this site right here would be elevated similar to this. And so, the engineer's design is that this would end up here, and that this would not be subject to this in the future. But that is the existing condition, and I don't know, I think we have several photos, John. But we are standing on the site of the hotel, and we are looking onto the six acres and beyond that Mr. Bakhta has an option to purchase. So, John, if you think you could find the grading plan that's in the Cobb Valley Model Report item, we can show that. Okay? So as we're looking at those photos, we're standing right here, and we're looking to the west. We have our, this sign, zoning sign right here. And so, this is relatively low, and it's got backup floodwater from Mulberry Creek. The, as we were looking at it, the water backed up, and it was receding when we were there, so it was in the process of draining back into the creek. So what the plan is, is that any floodwater would come into this area and be compensably stored. And if you look at all these contour lines, it's going to be quite deep and quite large storage area. Fill from this area would be used to elevate this to the same level as the hotel site. And the same engineer who calculated the floodway and the flood boundaries for Mulberry Creek is the engineer who did the study and concluded that if this plan was followed, that you would not see in the future what you see in that photograph that we just took. But as of today, not that, there was no water or floodwater on the site.
Is that true, was the ingress, egress road to the hotel that's being constructed and this with the road?
It has, it has been to date, but that is an item of concern, and it's an item of the concern that the city may need to take some steps to address for just the hotel site itself, but it would certainly apply to this as well. Because what we're doing is elevating the building sites, but the area where you first come, Coach Light Lane at Knight Street, there is an area where all the, where the Holiday Inn Express and Morton Building and Motel 6 and those properties, there's drainage way behind there. That drainage way goes underneath I-70, and then it comes out where Coach Light Lane intersects with Knight Street and flows into the area. So I don't, do you have an aerial photo that we can look at, John? So this, this is pre-demolition. These three buildings were there since the 1970s. They were built before it became a floodway. This is Coach Light Lane, and this is the proposed site. There's a drainage that comes underneath the interstate, comes along here, goes here, and goes into the creek. You can kind of see that right there, the concern, and we have to look at that. It has not, it's been, when Knight Street floods, then that is a concern there. But this isn't any lower than Knight Street, but it is something that would need to be looked at by the city to see what can do at this spot, because this, while you elevate this, this has not necessarily been elevated. But this, this is under development, and it's going to be occupied by motel guests, and so this is the means of access. Mr. Bakhta would actually improve the situation by putting a turnaround here that doesn't exist today and allow for traffic to go in and out. But that is the only route into the site.
It does concern me that we have, we have the examples of all the western properties under flood, and we're beginning to get smart and vacate those and leave the river to it rather than try to fight the reality. I don't know how important this is in that consideration. I'm just asking.
I think when the Board of Zoning Appeals heard this in 2017, we did have great discussion about that exact topic and whether or not that road would be underwater. And we saw pictures and heard history of all of that. But there were engineers here, they did address those things, and we had a lot of discussion about the exact question that you have, which isn't really something that's on here tonight. But the general, well, we were told that the hotels would be fine, people could get there, and the city would work towards some kind of project or possibility of resolving the issue of where egress is from Knight Street.
The, it's not a good answer for traffic circulation, but the two best solutions for reducing what you would call backup flooding from Mulberry Creek would be to get rid of the bridge on Knight Street and to get rid of the bridge on I-70. And if those were eliminated, the Mulberry Creek would flow downstream a lot better than what it does. But it's actually, as compared to buildings or development, which is a concern in the floodway, this particular bridge here is more of an obstruction, and the I-70 bridge is more of an obstruction than the placement of buildings. So you're, the idea behind the floodway is that the, when the floodwater comes and you put a bunch of buildings here, it's going to divert water away, and that's going to rise, raise levels on other property. As Mr. Freiberger pointed out, staff's, our approach to this would be different if Mr. Bakhta had not already retained the services, if this was just speculative. But he has put in the time and put in the effort and hired the one individual in the state that knows more about Mulberry Creek than anybody else to steady this.
We heard a lot about it.
And so, that gives, that gives staff more confidence in that area, but your point about Coach Light Lane is well taken, but it doesn't just apply to Mr. Bakhta's situation. The city needs to look at that as it relates to the motel that's already under construction.
Thank you. Other questions? No? Mr. Bakhta, do you have anything else you want to add? No? Is there anyone else here that would like to ask questions or has concerns or comments on this application? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, it's back to you. The question is rezoning to C-7.
So as we noted, we looked at the facts and the situation of how this property is located, and the findings in support of approval are outlined there, and potential findings in support of not approving development here are also there, and it's a matter of which one the commission finds most persuasive. And we think that the three, well, the four items, that the fact that this is already in the existing city limits and it's in proximity to I-70, the fact that the applicant has hired an engineer who's concluded that it is as feasible to develop this as the hotel site, the fact that we're just extending an existing C-5-7 district, and the fact that utilities are already in place, and the fact that you just voted to recommend that the plan be changed would seem to support the C-7 zoning over maintaining agricultural. But those would be the choices. Recommend approval of C-7. Recommend that this be postponed because you like us to provide additional information or recommend that this remain as agricultural zone property.
I make a motion that we approve application Z-19-6, changing zoning from A-1 to C-7.
Second.
I'd rather see that stay in agricultural land, as you might guess. The standing water is going to somewhat seep into the subsoil that will make it useful over time to farmers. I don't see adding to the development all the way.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second to approve rezoning to C-7 on this site. All those in favor, vote aye, please. All those in favor vote aye, please. Aye? Opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion carries. That would bring us to application P-19-2, which is now approval of preliminary plat of this property that we've been discussing tonight on Coach Light Lane.
So, what we have is, um, the area where the hotels are under development is called, creatively enough, Interstate District Southwest of I-70 Edition, and that was approved by the Planning Commission in 1973. Um, in 1974, the first building permit was issued for a multi-story hotel. At that time, was known as the Coach Light Inn. Um, there was also a building that was constructed for a Red Coach Restaurant, and then over time, uh, there were a number of different motel chains that operated there. The original road that was constructed there was actually a KDOT frontage road that provided access to the farmhouse, and in 1982, there was a special assessment project that upgraded Coach Light Lane to a named, uh, public street. And, um, so that has been a street since 1982. Um, we've had the Ramada Inn, the Travel Lodge, the Econo Lodge, and, um, those properties came into neglect and disrepair, and, um, one of the buildings, there was actually a letter of map revision was approved, and so even though one of the hotels, um, was in the map floodway for Mulberry Creek, they actually weren't paying flood insurance because the property was sufficiently eligible. As we pointed out in May of 2017, um, based on a flood impact study report by Mr. Joe File, professional engineer, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved a floodway variance, allowed the existing motel buildings that we had on the aerial photo to be removed and replaced with three new buildings, subject to, um, the development conforming with the plan submitted to and approved by the board, setting minimum, uh, floor elevations for the new construction, and, um, issuance of a permit from the Kansas Department of Water Resources. And the Kansas Department of Water Resources did approve that permit, and so the hotel is under construction. Only thing that's changed since that time is that, um, with the adoption of the new flood maps and flood regulations, Salina has gone from being an at or above community to a one-foot above community. So, from 1986 until 2018, if you were in the floodplain, you had to elevate your floor to the hundred-year flood elevation. Now, you have to elevate it to one foot above the hundred-year flood elevation. So, this third item is, um, uh, the plat, the layout for how Mr. Bakhtah proposes to lay out and develop the property. And so, um, the plan is to extend Coach Light Lane to the west, and that, that would provide access. He was going to construct a, extend the road, construct a cul-de-sac. One of the items that we'll have to work through before, um, the, the final plat is if you drive by the area, there's a fence there that sets the boundary for I-70. This is outside the fence for I-70, but KDOT is asserting that they still own the right of way from the time that that was a frontage road. So, um, that needs to be resolved before the final plat, and KDOT has indicated, um, that they're willing to grant Mr. Bakhtah permit, um, to construct the road. But the ideal situation would be if KDOT would just quit claiming the property, um, to the city like they've done in some other locations. Mr. Bakhtah is proposing two lots, a front lot that's 1.64 acres and a rear lot that's 1.1 acres behind it. And then, um, a third lot is being set aside for large stormwater detention and compensatory flood storage area. Wanted to point out that the way this lot boundary is, is set up right here, that this lot does not have frontage on the, the cul-de-sac. So, in order to approve this, Mr. Bakhtah is requesting two variances or variations from the city's subdivision regulations. One is the fact that Coach Light Lane, which is already 950 feet long, would be extended and would exceed the 600-foot maximum length of the dead-end street. And as we pointed out, it was already over that when it was originally constructed, and, um, the other aspect of that is to a variance to the requirement that all platted lots have frontage on approved public or private street. So, on page four and five there are, um, the criteria that you're supposed to use to evaluate a variation request, and so staff has analyzed this. We've consulted with the fire department. Coach Light Lane, as it exists today, already exceeds 600 feet in length. Mr. Bakhtah will actually be improving the situation by constructing a turnaround at the end of the street, which is missing today. And, um, if you look at the situation of the property, due to its shape, its physical surroundings, the only way to get to this property is from Coach Light Lane. You can't get it to, to it from the north because of I-70, or from the south from Mulberry Creek. There's no existing roads to the west, so if the 600-foot length limitation was strictly applied, this property would be inaccessible. And then, the, uh, due to the layout and again, the, the shape and the location of I-70, um, Mr. Bakhtah is proposing to create an access easement right here that would substitute for, uh, a public street, and that could work in this situation if ownership and maintenance responsibilities are clearly established and recorded. So, we have a number of those around town. If you are, um, going to the terminus of Belmont Boulevard to the west of, uh, South Ninth Street, you can't necessarily tell that the street ends at Planet Avenue, and if you drive on to the west towards Goodwill and what used to be Aldi's and the hotel, that is not a public street. That is a shared access easement that's shared by Goodwill and the other uses, and so instead of extending the street, Mr. Bakhtah is proposing to have that as a private access easement. We've highlighted for you that there is water and sewer available. The area that's set aside for detention storage is, um, magnitudes larger than what is needed to accommodate runoff from the site. It's being designed to handle, um, runoff coming down Mulberry Creek, um, to provide a compensatory storage area. So, in terms of dedications, um, we're not proposing to dedicate right of way for Coach Light Lane until, um, we can determine between KDOT and the city who has, um, control over that. There are easements being provided on the plat. West Star has requested that two of those be widened by 10 feet. Um, the rest are 20 feet in width, and this large area here will be set aside as a drainage easement. There's no sidewalk system along Coach Light Lane that exists or is proposed at this time. And as far as the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan says development can occur in a conservation area, but it's a location that's already served by city utilities. So, um, our recommendation, having, um, recommended approval of changes to the comprehensive plan and a change to the zoning, would be to approve, uh, the preliminary plat, including the two requested, um, variations as to cul-de-sac length and access or frontage to a public street. And then we've outlined, um, six conditions there, and I think condition, um, number five is most important, is that, um, despite everything that might have been done at today's meeting, no development can occur on this property unless a floodway variance is approved by the Salina Board of Zoning Appeals, based on a no-rise certificate prepared by a licensed professional engineer. So, the idea, um, between bringing these items to the Planning Commission at this point was to see if, um, the Planning Commission was supportive of Mr. Bakhtah's plan and vision for the property. If you are, um, that would tell him, um, that he can, um, work more closely with his design engineer, um, to put a floodway variance application together, because if, if you, as a board, viewed this as not developable property, there wouldn't be any point in him doing that. So, having recommended a change to the land use plan and a change in zoning, our recommendation would be to approve Mr. Bakhtah's plat of this property, um, incorporating all the public improvements shown, and also including, um, the length of Coach Light Lane and the, uh, access easement for Lot Two. With that, be happy to address any questions you have about the plat itself.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Not? Anything you want to add? No? Questions for Mr. Bakhtah? Anybody else? Questions, comments, thoughts? Not, we'll close the public hearing. So, the five recommendation, or the five, six conditions enlisted.
Yes, and definitely, uh, number five is the most important because we could be doing all this at the meeting today, but if he, he would be unable to, um, meet all the requirements to obtain a floodway variance, um, then nothing's going to occur on this property. But we felt like, um, having the Planning Commission look at this first and how you viewed this particular property was what should happen first before he, um, got involved more detail with his professional engineer.
Which is going to be the same as the one on the property adjacent.
Same as the one on the hotel, yes.
So, I would think the precedence would be to approve that, but I'll hear that at that time.
I guess I have a question. Is that mostly parking lot that we're seeing laid out there?
Well, the, and it, this is, uh, very much conceptual, but this, this is a building footprint here, and this is parking around it on three sides. There would be access here, and then this is parking here with a potential building running along here like that. So, again, this is, this is not, this is a concept of how the property could be developed as, and I don't know if you can blow it up at all, John, but, um, this is just showing the footprint of a future building with parking around it. This is a lot line. This would be a separate lot, accessed this way, and this footprint is, um, what you would typically see as a footprint for a hotel. And that's, this is the adjoining property to the east, and this is the building that was planned on that property. So, this just shows how those would interrelate. But we haven't gotten to the, what they did is that they used the building footprints and the, the paving to calculate what kind of runoff would be coming off this property if it was developed, but the magnitude of the size of this area here is, I can't, maybe Mr. Owens can tell us, but how many times above what would be needed to handle the parking lot and building runoff from this site, because it's, it's designed primarily to take, um, any overspill from the Mulberry Creek.
I think I'm always looking for someone to put in permeable paving, and was wondering if this is a, um, a good place for it, but, I mean, I, I know with that, um, huge detention basin, that it looks like it will take runoff, but I'm always hoping somebody on Salina will put in one of those permeable pavement parking lots.
Maybe if we say it enough.
Yeah.
What, five years now? But I was hoping someone would tear down those hotels. That happened, so there's a chance.
Mr. Owens would be the right person to, to discuss permeable pavement with and where we are with that. Our experiences have been that the, uh, initial installation costs of permeable pavement tend to be higher than standard pavement, which has, um, made people not want to be the first one to, to be, but Mr. Owens might know a little about what progress has been made in that area.
Did you want to ask him that question?
Sure.
Commissioner, good.
Do you have any comments, comments on that?
Would you please state your name and address?
I know sometimes, I mean, some of the argument against having it is because of our clay soil and it, there's no place for it to go, but it seems like this might be a good opportunity.
Uh, Justin Owens, uh, my address is 21, or 29, 28, Jack Circle.
Thank you.
Um, I, honestly, I, I haven't dealt much with permeable pavement. I know, like you said, our clay soils really prohibit some of that, um, and you just don't see it. I don't know why, um, why people haven't taken more advantage of it. Be probably the upfront cost would be my guess. Um, but yeah, I can't, I can't really speak to seeing any progress, um, for use of that, but hopefully, I think it's a good product and maybe it's something we can see in the future.
Yeah, I didn't know if you could, if there, I mean, the design's already, you've already put a lot of time and effort, but yeah, just wondering if it would mean a smaller detention basin if you had permeable pavement.
Really, it wouldn't affect, the runoff off the site really wouldn't affect the, the detention basin. The basin's size, basically, it's mainly just a large borrow pit for what we need for our property.
Yes, I see.
So, it's, the size is balanced. We ta, we're taking as much soil out, out of that, uh, detention pond and placing it. So, that's really what's dictating the size of that.
I see. So, you really don't need permeable pavement?
Right, yeah. Well, detention's not an issue. We need the, we need the dirt more than we need the, the detention area.
I see. Thank you.
I think that the closest we came to permeable pavement was on the Heritage at Hawthorne project, which is a pretty tight site, and they were looking at having to do some onsite detention and not really having any space on the site to do it, and they, they came that close to using permeable pavement instead of having detention, but they found some areas to detain and created some bio swells on the property and detained it there instead of permeable pavement. But that's the only project I'm aware of where we had some serious discussions where you could do permeable pavement and not have to have any detention area.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Then we are being asked to request approval of a preliminary plat.
I recommend approval of application P-19-2, following with the recommendation, the six recommendations on page seven.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'd second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application P-19-2, along with the six recommendations by staff. Any questions or discussion? Not, all those in favor vote aye, please.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. That would bring us to application SUP-19-2, which is filed by Jeff Cooper, requesting a special use permit to allow a seasonal open air market, or farmer's market, to be established in an R1, single-family residential district. The subject property is a manual four-square church. Four Square Church, which is addressed as 1325 East Cloud Street.
Thank you, Chair. John, if we can start with the, with an aerial photo to get the context of the area where we're looking. So, this aerial photograph shows the location of the proposed special use permit for a farmer's market. It is the parking lot in front of Emmanuel Four Square Church, which is just to the east of the Ohio and Cloud intersection, directly east of Dillon. So, that gives you the area that we're talking about. If we can go to the plan now, John. And this is the plan that the applicant has. So, the applicant is proposing a Tuesday market from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and he would like to have this market from May all the way through to, I've got the date here, October. Yes, all the way through October. Thank you. However, because this type of application has a protest period, we won't be able to have any May farmer's markets. The earliest farmer's market we could have, if you were to approve it, would be June 4th. Now, if you were to approve it and he would follow any requirements or criteria that you would put on the approval of the special use permit, he could renew that annually, and that would have a May date rather than a June date. So, I wanted to point that out right up front. So, the applicant, Jeff Cooper, has been operating produce stands around the area and participating in local farmer's markets for several years, and what he's proposing is to have a row of vendors here, starting out with six, where they would have their trucks or vehicles that would be in this row two that we've identified on the aerial map, and they would have their tables and tents that would be on the south side facing the customers, which would come in and park and use rows four and five. So, the operation would be customers would come in from one of these entrances off of Cloud, they would park, and then they would be able to meet with the vendors who are parked and facing them on the north rows two and three. The applicant is proposing six vendors at the moment. However, if you were to extend that all the way out across the entire row with the space that's potentially provided there in rows two and three, the site could accommodate up to 25 vendors. And so, that's something that the applicant would ask for is that you would allow him to use this entire row of two and three. He would also point out that he has been approached by a food truck who would like to join the farmer's market, and even though the food truck itself is not a produce vendor, could be potentially a vendor that could participate in the farmer's market if that's something that you guys felt was appropriate. Looking at the sanitation and utilities, the applicant says that there are restroom facilities located on the west side of the church that both customers and vendors would be allowed to use, and there are no vendors using any power or electricity and no generators, so there would be no need for any other utilities as the restroom facilities would be the only things they would really need. The applicant does not believe they'll have any security issues and will handle anything that arises, and if anything exceeds his capacity to handle, he will, he'll ask for assistance from 911 if necessary. Looking at the noise control, there is a saxophone player that will be accompanied by a CD player, portable CD player, pod player kind of mechanism that can project music. Now, that wouldn't necessarily be amplified sound. Amplified sound is when you have a sound that's being amplified and being produced on the site. However, there would still need to be some limitations to that boombox or CD player. And the saxophone itself is not considered amplified sound because it's an instrument. And so, that is something that shouldn't be a problem according to the applicant, and if there are news, noise complaints, he'll address that appropriately with the saxophone player or with the other vendors if they are the culprits of the noise complaints. Parking and traffic control is something that usually comes up with a special use permit, and in this case, there is quite a bit of parking given that this activity is taking place on a Tuesday evening when the church is not in session. They don't have any activities or events planned that night, giving the applicant and the farmer's market the entire parking lot to use. And so, with that in mind, there are 27 stalls in Row Four and another 27 stalls in Row Five that can be used for a total of 54 parking stalls and for the six original vendors and even for a 25-vendor farmer's market total build-out that should be sufficient. If there are medical emergencies that arise, the applicant states that they will use 911 emergency services. And for cleanup and site restoration, there is a trash can going to be on-site. Vendors will be expected to take care of their own trash, and at the end of the evening, all the trash will be discarded in the dumpster that the church has that they've given the farmer's market permission to use. So, there'll be nothing left at the end of the day when the market closes and everyone leaves the site. This location is fairly visible to a high-traffic area, being close to Ohio Street and being adjacent to an established grocery store, which makes it potentially appropriate for a farmer's market that has a similar type of trade in good that they are selling. And the applicant also did, we received on behalf of the neighbors, a supportive letter that people on Austin Circle are supportive of the farmer's market. So, that's some feedback from the public that you may want to keep in mind. And the alternatives that you have with this application is, one, you could approve the special use permit with any conditions that you think are appropriate if you find that the plan is supportive and conducive to the surrounding area, and you could also postpone consideration if you feel additional information is needed, or you could deny the applicant's request for the farmer's market if you find that it cannot be supported by the surrounding area. So, if you do find that it is compatible to the surrounding properties, staff would recommend a number of conditions of approval that are on page seven, and the first one is that the farmer's market vending area be limited to the second and third rows on the plan, and that would include any musical performers or food trucks, and that none of those activities should fill out, spill out into any of the adjacent driving aisles, that display areas shall be clearly identified and provide a pedestrian walking aisle, and driveways must remain open to allow vehicles to enter and leave the site, and that a ground sign of not more than 32 square feet could be erected along Cloud Street just to alert people of the activities that are taking place on the site during the farmer's market, and that any music or musical performances not be amplified, they be limited to non-amplification, and that the site should be cleaned and restored to its original condition, and that if the special use permit is not adhered to in these conditions, that the special use permit could be revoked in the future. If you were to approve this application, the farmer's market would be viable through November 1st of 2019 with the potential to renew it annually as an administrative temporary use permit, working with staff, and in that case, it would be eligible for May 1st through October date rather than the June date that we're going to be starting with if you approve it this year. So, if there's any questions, staff would take them now.
I have a couple of questions regarding signage.
Sure.
I want to backtrack a little bit to the Waters site that's Saturday morning. That sign that sits out on the road all the time saying there is a farmer's market here that happens year-round, this sign, I assume, is only during the time of the market?
You could, and that's really your discretion. That's, I think that's-
If we agree to this, well, that's my question. If we agree to this, is it only during the time of the market, or does it sit there year-round?
We were, we were indicating it to be just during the market, that it would be put up and removed, but that's something that you could decide either way.
But it doesn't clarify that in this condition or recommendation.
On number four there, one clarifying amendment would be to say a temporary ground sign shall be permitted along Cloud Street on the day of the market.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Cooper what his thoughts are there and maybe the, so representative from the church. Other questions?
I don't have a question, but because our agenda reminded us that we're not supposed to engage in ex parte contact, I just need to disclose that I did have contact with Mr. Cooper in that when I found out you wanted to have this, I just contacted him to make sure he knew he needed a permit, and he already knew that.
Yes, and in the effort of full disclosure, I also visited with him several times about trying to move the locations farther south, so I don't think it really influences our decision tonight in any way, but anybody else want to disclose anything?
[laughing]
You can just look at my Facebook account and see that obviously I'm a great supporter of farmer's markets, and I answer these questions all week publicly. If not, Mr. Cooper, do you want to approach? I just need your name and address, please.
Jeff Cooper, 225 East Minneapolis.
Is this replacing Tuesday at the Field House?
It is. I'm part of a core group that sells Tuesday nights at the, at the Field House, and we wanted to develop a market that could keep that group together and hopefully carry over all those customers to a year-round situation. So, we'll all be back at the Field House, and we're looking for a way to work together in the summertime.
And then you go back to the Field House?
We actually tried to find another south location, which fell through last year. Last summer, Mr. Pangra from Emmanuel Four Square approached us, and so, we pursued this location.
What's your thought on the sign? Were you just going to put it out during the market?
That was my initial thought on it. I, we're trying to be good guests and good neighbors. Don't want to, you know, encroach on what the church is needing to do, so we don't, we don't necessarily want to have something permanent on their property. I guess that's something we could address down the road, but I hadn't thought of a permanent sign.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Cooper besides mine?
I do have a quick question. So, initially, you were looking at have the sax player with a boombox? Well, are you familiar with Monty the Checker at Dillon's, who plays his saxophone out in front? I am not. This, I just asked him if he would be interested in playing. It's nothing that, that is set in stone or any of that. I do know that he plays with a boombox. That's why we put that in the permit. I mean, he may not even show up. I have no idea. I just-
But he doesn't amplify his sound.
He just plays along with the boombox.
Has accompaniment on a, on a recorder.
So, this question is back to staff then. So, on number five, you've got any music or musical performances on the site shall be limited to non-amplified sound, so that means he would not be able to use that with that?
Well, if it's, if it's just a standard-
It's not amplified.
-CD player and not something that's like a commercial-grade amplification, then we wouldn't consider that to be amplified sound. It's just a CD player or whatever. And then with the saxophone, the saxophone isn't amplified either, so there's no amplification of sound. There's just reproduction of sound, which is a little bit different than amplification.
So, our definition of amplified sound is what you have at the Smoky Hill River Festival where they have amplifiers that are, that are designed to amplify the sound and the fact that you have a boombox as providing background music. It's, it's just a matter of degree, and so, as long as there's not amplification equipment, which we would not classify boombox as, then they are not considered to be using amplified sound. But just like anything else is that on a lot of these, and even some special, an anniversary event at the Blind Pig or things like that that we approve, we just have, have a provision that says that the event organizer has to be responsive to noise complaints. And so, I don't, we don't anticipate that that's going to generate anything, but we just, anybody who's having music or sound as part of their event, we just try to get that out there to say, you know, if, if there are neighbors complaining, just be responsive to their complaints.
When we discussed that on the Masonic Temple, because that became a large discussion on that particular site, was there ever actually anyone that complained?
No.
Because there was amplified sound and we took, I think we limited the decibels or something on it. Any other questions for Mr. Cooper? Any plans to figure out how to get it out to the public as to where these markets actually are?
Local advertising, Facebook, events, things like that.
Is there one source that we can direct people to? Because really, all week long, I get Facebook requests and things. Where is the farmer's market at today or tomorrow or Thursday or?
I guess the best thing I can say is look in the Journal. That, we'll definitely have an ad in the Journal. It'll be in the community calendar.
Cool. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Anybody from the public want to speak on this subject? Neighbors, friends, allies? All, most of all of you are supporters, so we'll close it for the public here. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, James?
James Bowden, 141, South 10th. I'd like to encourage it be passed with the food truck addition as it gives people an opportunity to, to provide a value-added product, which could be something that has to do with local foods. Thank you.
That is not actually, is that actually a part of this application request?
It is. It's something that the applicant came up with after it was already advertised, but it's, this is an open-air market. This is the, a type of special use permit that allows for various kinds of open-in marketing, and food trick, food trucks are a potential element of an open-air market.
Didn't we have that at the Masonic site?
We have another application coming up that, that is somewhat similar to this that deals with food trucks.
But I mean, in the past, we've had them, yeah.
They've, that's possible.
Okay. So, wherein here is that if we're to make some kind of a motion, does it have to include that verbiage?
On number one, under conditions of approval, it says the farmer's market vending area and associated activities, including musical performers and food trucks.
Okay.
So, what the idea is that you are saying that this area here is all suitable for outdoor market activity, and if that's occupied by a food vendor, a market vendor, fine. If it's occupied by a food truck, fine. If it's occupied by musical performers, fine. That's what you're saying.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back up here for discussion and a motion.
I guess I'm wondering on number five on the musical performance, I'm thinking of the Saturday market, and I'm guessing that I think they have, would have to use amplified sound. Like if, if you're a guitar player, wouldn't you?
They do. There's a singer that sings and uses amplified sound.
And a musician did approach me and asked where the farmers, or who the contacts were for the farmer's markets because she did want to participate. So, I'm guessing there is going to be interest from musicians to play. So, I guess, is there a way to limit it to decibel? Do you think that's what we did?
We did that on the Masonic Temple site when we had the Wednesday evening one, and I don't remember how it all worked out, but-
One thing you could also do is say that it's limited to non-amplification unless you get a amplified sound.
I think that's what we did.
Because we actually have a permit- Because we actually have a permit through the city clerk's office for amplified sound that could be obtained or applied for on a case-by-case basis. But that would give them the permission at least to apply for one of those.
So, if you want to have a block party and block off your street on the 3rd of July and bring in a live band with amplifiers and all the bells and whistles, you can do that, but you have to get an amplified sound permit to do that. So, what we're trying to do with the farmer's markets and these markets is to allow the musical performances to occur as part of the market without requiring an amplified sound permit, because it could be very cumbersome if every week the market's held, that somebody has to get an amplified sound permit. So, it's, it's easier for us to try to discourage the use of high-voltage amplification equipment and try to get as much acoustic music as we can, so that it's not- So, if a bar or drinking establishment wants to have live bands on an outdoor patio, they have to get planning commission approval for that. And so, we're, we're trying to say that these, these types of things are not the same as having Thursday night jam at the festival or a bar having an amplified sound band at an outdoor patio. So, most of what's occurring at these markets, we would not consider to fall into the category of amplified sound. That doesn't mean they're purely acoustical. But I believe that is how it was addressed on the Masonic site was, you either have non-amplified sound, or if you want to have amplified sound, then the performer has to obtain amplified sound permit.
I hate to make a performer have to do that.
Well, it's, it's usually the event organizer. But the event organizer would need to know that that is the case.
Well, my understanding was Mr. Cooper did not plan on varying much on the musical entertainment. Is that correct? You're not going to go out and recruit a rock group?
Right.
Have us sparring with Dylan's out in the parking lot? So, I think that's-
And the word minimal is probably too vague.
Yes, yes. And I'm sure that Ann, when she sings, she uses a little one, but it's not.
You wouldn't consider that amplified?
No, I wouldn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
At Waters, you don't consider the singer with the small little thing amplified?
We've had that, we've had that discussion in the case of the review of sidewalk dining areas downtown on Santa Fe, that you could have some background music out on the patio, but it can't rise to the level of having amplifiers and having live band performances in your sidewalk dining area. But you could have background music that has some low level of amplification.
Okay.
It's, since Salinas Disturbing the Peace Ordinance does not, it's not based on decibel levels. We can't, we can't, we can't give you a say, well, you can do this and as long as it doesn't exceed this decibel level, we can't, we can't provide that for you because our disturbing the peace ordinance is not based on decibel levels.
They don't want to carry another piece of equipment.
So, now that you've clarified that, is that a motion?
Sure.
With the seven? What about the signage?
Yeah, if we approved a temporary, as I think you suggested, adding the word temporary.
The, what we suggested was on number four, "A temporary ground sign shall be permitted along Cloud Street on the day of the market."
And then if in the future, they wanted a permanent sign, they could just come back?
They could come back and say, "We've decided that we would like to have this, that we would want to have the support of the church to have that there," because, just because the church itself is limited to so many signs and they may not want to lose the opportunity to have their own sign, to have the market have their sign. Because the one thing about churches is that the, this is zoned residential. And so, the, the limitations on signage at Emmanuel Four Square are greater than the limitations at Dylan's. So, because it is residential property.
Did you have a comment? You'll have to come up, you'll have to-
I just talked to the church, they're not interested in a permanent sign. So, we want, we have a permanent sign.
Okay.
So, no permanent sign.
There's no interest in a permanent sign. So, we will still leave the word verbiage, that it's temporary? That would be my suggestion. Any other changes then, besides that? Commissioner Good?
No.
No? So, I is-
Technically, well, I move to approve the special use permit application with the seven conditions listed on page seven for application number SUP 19-2.
With number four modified to be a temporary sign.
Oh, right. On the day of the market.
Excellent. On the day of the market. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application SUP 19-2, along with the seven staff recommendations, including an altered number four, that the market sign shall just be on the day of the market, temporary. All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Cooper. That would bring us to application SUP 19-3 filed by Gaddert? Geidert?
Gaddert.
Gaddert? Gaddert? Gaddert Farms Sweet Corn requesting a special use permit for another seasonal open-air market produce stand to be established in a C3 shopping center district. This is at Midstate Plaza, which is addressed as 2540 South 9th Street.
John, if we can start with the aerial photo again to show the general location that we're talking about?
Well, hold on just a second. Mr. Story has a point of clarification here.
What they have up here is 2540.
It's, it's listed as 2540 South 9th Street. And you say it's 2450?
That's what it says on my piece. I mean, I don't know. I probably got the wrong machine.
You are, you are, you are half-right.
He would know.
The, the Midstate Plaza, main building that Dustin's pointing at, is addressed as 2450 South 9th. However, this is a separate platted lot that is currently vacant, but it's an outlot. And if a building gets built on that, it will be addressed as 2540 South 9th. So, while the existing building is 2450, this vacant lot outlined in blue there is addressed as 2540.
So, now we know the location. Thank you, Dean. So, this, this area around the blue box is the proposed area for the special use permit. And the nature of the request is Tanya Martisco, Martisco, on behalf of Gaddert Farms Sweet Corn is requesting to have a roadside stand to sell produce and sweet corn in, in the aerial photo. Or this elevation photo that John has shows what their standard stand looks like. So, this would be an open-air market and it would be located south of Schlotzky's. So, here's Schlotzky's and the yellow hexagon is the representation of, is the representation of the stand that the applicant is proposing. So, they're, they're really close to the main entrance off of South 9th Street. However, they are quite a ways away from the main body of the Midstate Plaza development and most of the traffic and congestion. The proposed roadside stand would operate Tuesdays through Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. from mid-June to mid-August, depending on when the corn is harvested and, and ready for sale and consumption. Staff would make a note that this location, that the blue box that we looked at earlier, is also the site of a fireworks stand that usually comes for a few days around the end of June and early July. So, there, there may be some overlap of additional, of potentially two different special use permits on the same property. There are no limitations on the number of special use permits or outdoor markets that can reside on a single location at the same time. And since this particular property is vacant and is a open parking lot today, they, there should be enough parking and enough room to accommodate both uses during that overlap time period. The market itself would be, again, operated by the applicant with the help of a full-time employee who will operate and manage the local stand. The applicant has been operating produce stands, selling their sweet corn in the area and the region since 1997. And they have temporary stands in Hutchison, McPherson, Newton, Andover, Derby, and five in Wichita. So, they have a number of stores in the area already. And the genesis of this particular application is they've had many customers who are from the Salina area, who have been encouraging them to come into our market. And so, that's what they're intending to do with this application. The, the stand will take up about two parking spaces. It's 12 feet across in diameter and is made of wood with a shade structure on top. And it will be a single stand for this particular application. They do have different locations where they do have two stands, if they're more established and they're busier. But to start with the first year, their stand, they are proposing to have just a single structure. The stand is stocked daily with fresh corn that they produce on their farm outside of Bueller and brought onto site to be sold to local customers. The parking stalls for this particular area would be around the open area that you see. And there's no other structures. So, there is a number of parking stalls. And the service would be predicted, predicted to be to the north and to the east, so that customers are standing in vacant parking stalls rather than vacant driving aisles, so that if there are vehicles driving through the parking lot, that they are protected and out of the way of the driving aisles. The stand itself does have a counter that they use for the transactions, where people can, can purchase the sweet corn and, and receive it and then be on their way. For sanitation and utilities, the stand does not use any electricity, will not need any generators. And for restroom purposes, the employee that will be managing the stand, because this is a summer stand, is encouraged to take frequent breaks and go to different restaurants to refresh themselves and use the restroom and cool off at those facilities. And the applicant states that the transaction is rather quick because the corn is already ready, readily available to be purchased. And they don't feel a restroom for, or for customers would be necessary in this particular case. The stand will be occupied at all times during its operation by an employee, which will provide the security on the site. If something occurs that is beyond their capabilities to handle, that employee will contact 911 for emergency services. And when we look at noise control, there is no generator or any electrical devices. And there is no amplified sound or music being proposed with this particular stand. Again, this stand is located on the eastern edge of the Midstate Plaza area, removed from the bulk activities of the shopping center. And where most of the people are going to be parking next to the building and driving to the building from the access road, they're going to be south of the access road and, and removed from the bulk of the traffic, which should keep the stand and any customers safe and out of harm's way for vehicles, while still providing sufficient parking spaces around the proposed stand. Cleanup and restoration, the applicant will have a trashcan on-site to dispose of any refuse that they may have, which they project to be rather limited. And at the end of the day, any unsold produce is actually hauled off and, or given away to people that could use the food. So, the applicant has been operating stands, again, since 1997, has over 10 locations in our geographic region. And they have an established model that they use, that you can see on the picture, that they feel very comfortable with. And, and the location is very visible while still being separated from major traffic congestion and providing significant off-street parking that is above and beyond what the Midstate Plaza would typically need. So, you would have your, your three alternatives that you typically do, where you could approve the application with any conditions of approval that you find necessary. If you find it meets the findings of being compatible with the surrounding area, you could postpone consideration if you think additional information is needed. You could deny the application if you feel it is not compatible with this particular location in the surrounding area. If you do find that it is compatible, we do have a number of recommended conditions of approval on page seven. One would be that the special use permit open-air market be limited to the location of the yellow hexagon and the single structure that the applicant is proposing. And that the structure and all interactions with customers take place on the parking stalls that are vacant and that they do not spill over into any driving aisles to make sure that everyone is safe. And that the site be cleaned and restored to its original condition following the conclusion of the outdoor market. And the third is the general one, that if any of those conditions are not met, that the special use permit could be revoked. So, this is an application that is for June 19th through August 15th. June 19th would be the earliest they would start. However, it's, again, it's going to be dependent on when the corn is ripe and ready to be harvested. And it could be renewed administratively through a temporary use permit with staff on an annual basis after that. And if you have any questions, we would take them now.
Are there questions for staff? No? The applicant? Would you like to speak? I just need your name and address, please.
Good evening. Tanya Martisco, Gaddert Farms Sweet Corn, 13209 East 82nd in Bueller. I would just appreciate the opportunity. We've, for many years, we've considered coming to Salina and just logistics and stuff, never worked out. This year, we're giving it another go and Dustin's been very helpful for me. So, like you said, we've been doing this for quite a long time. We have an established model, same stands. June 19th is the date we put on there. We're not going to be open by then. We're hoping for 1st of July. With the weather right now, there's going to be some days we may not even be here because we can't get it planted right now. But that's just going to be on a, a day-by-day basis and we get what we can get. And then we usually go through about mid-August, around second week of August is where we usually finish up. So, those are kind of our, our timeframe we'll fit within.
How many years of corn do you sell, like, in a season?
A lot.
With all of these locations?
A lot.
Really? That's amazing. Well, any other questions? No?
Does it need to be kept cool during that time?
There's no way we can. We just encourage people to come by it early. We hope to open the stand around 10. We've still got to figure our logistics on that, transportation-wise and all that. We'll stay open until around 5:00 o'clock. If we sell out early, then we'll be done early. So, that's just how it goes.
People could come tomorrow or the next day.
Yeah, they just have to come the next day.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
And, and you mentioned that there's other produce sometimes that you sell as well, but your primary product is sweet corn, is that correct?
Right. We, we grow and produce our own sweet corn. That's our main product. But we do also sell tomatoes and a whole variety of other produce that we get from other local growers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? James? No? You're fully in support?
I'm going to talk to them.
Okay. If not, I'm going to close the public- If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it up here for discussion and a
I make a motion that we approve, Special Use Permit 19-3 with the staff recommendations on page seven.
It's been moved and seconded to approve SUP 19-3 along with the three staff recommendations. All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries also. Congratulations and good luck. Feed the hungry. Application 3.4, or actually, item 3.4, application SUP 19-4 is filed by Salina Innovation Foundation, requesting a special use permit to allow a food truck park to be established and operated in a C3 district. This property is the Masonic Temple Parking Lot, which is addressed as 336 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Thank you. Let's start with the aerial photo again, John. This is our third and final special use permit, and it's a little bit different than the previous two, where the previous two were discussing the sale of produce. We are still dealing with food, but we're dealing with food trucks in this case. So the applicant, who is the Salina Innovation Foundation, and they operate the former Masonic Temple property, they are proposing to have a monthly event of food trucks that would take place on the parking lot north of their property. This monthly event would happen from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. and would consist of four trucks. If we can go to the, this plan on this part. Four, yeah, there you go. There you go, John. Four trucks in kind of a U-pattern or an N-pattern, depending on, I guess, how you're looking at the plan, surrounding an open area that would have tables and chairs set up for people to sit and dine, as well as an open area where live entertainment and performances can be made. The live performances could consist of anything ranging from musicians to artists and other types of live performers, and could vary from month to month, but it would be a monthly event in which they do intend to have live entertainment. Other cities have established similar events to this, where they have a specific location on each Friday, or the first Friday of each month, rather, where they combine food trucks and art and entertainment in the same location on a regularly scheduled date to bring people to an area. And that's what the applicant is attempting to do here, is bring activity and engagement to the south edge of the downtown area. We would note that the location of this particular property is in the Star Bond District, and as such, it's part of a community improvement district that has a special sales tax, and that any vendors in this area or on this property, as part of this event, would have to collect the necessary sales taxes that are unique to vendors located in that CID, that Community Improvement District area. For restrooms, the Innovation Foundation does have restrooms within the building that will be open to all employees, vendors, and anyone who is visiting the site as a customer. There will be generators used to power up the food trucks. There will be generators on-site. However, the applicant, Mr. Bowden, is informing all of them that because this is an event where we want people to come, and we do have a number of food trucks coming together, that we want to try to keep the decibel levels to a controllable level. For security, the applicant says he will handle any security, and if situations arise where they're finding that they need additional support or help, that they will use first-choice security in town to help supplement their control and control their security needs. For noise control, there will be live entertainment. Some of those live entertainments will require amplified sound, some of them will not. And what we would have suggested, that any entertainer or performer that does require amplified sound, they would be required to get an amplified sound permit. And that, again, is through the city clerk's office. For parking, if this were a regular brick-and-mortar food establishment, restaurant facilities are required to have one off-street parking stall for every three seats in their dining area. And the north row of parking stalls, which is where the off-street parking is going to be provided on this particular plan, has 18 parking stalls. So if you reverse engineer that, that would be sufficient for up to 54 customers at any one given time, which we feel is sufficient for the number of food trucks that the applicant is proposing, especially since there are not other events on the site at the same time, no competing events. The applicant also does note that he is working with American State Bank to come up with some additional off-street parking, and they have a parking lot across the street to the east that could potentially be used if an agreement is reached between the two parties. If we go back to the site plan, John, the applicant also on his site plan has temporary parking drop-off lanes on each side, which staff is a little concerned about in that we, a couple of things. One, we find it might be confusing to people who come on-site, and if they, if somebody comes in, and if they park here, and everybody parks here, and somebody comes in, and there's no way through, they're stuck. So one thing that we thought of is either blocking off these altogether, because we do have a drive-through that can get all the way through, you know, without having an aisle parked, and just using that parking, or shifting all of the events to one side, blocking off one side, say, say, 7th Street and leaving Santa Fe open, and providing a little more area and somehow indicating where the driving aisle is, that it has to remain open, and have a little more area for some parking that way. There may be a way to come up with a better parking design in that way by shifting everything to one direction. Or, again, just using this whole area for the event and blocking off both of these entrances and just leaving the north driving aisle open. Those would be the two ideas that staff would have to better address the temporary parking or loading and floating. And looking at emergency medical, we are just across the street from the hospital, so we are in a convenient location if somebody does need emergency care. And for cleanup and restoration, the Innovation Center does have its own waste container designed and sufficient for an event like this. And all of the vendors would be expected to work together to make sure that any refuse or trash is contained to the site and properly discarded into the refuse containers. And the applicant, as the manager of the event, will see to it that at the end of the event, that the site is brought to its original condition and everything is cleaned up. So in this particular case, we have a proposed monthly food truck park that will feature some unique live entertainment located on the southern edge of the downtown. It is the hope of the applicant that this monthly event will help bring people to the downtown area and provide a unique experience that is currently unavailable in Salina. And there is off-street parking in the area, again, too, on the north and potentially across the street with the American State Bank property. The alternative actions that you have is, one, to approve the proposed special use permit with any conditions you see fit. You could postpone consideration if additional information is needed, or you could deny the application if you don't feel that it is a good design of a site plan, or if the location is not suitable for the type of use that is being proposed. If you do find that it is a good use and a good design of a plan and that it is compatible with the surrounding area, we do have seven recommendations of approval or criteria that are very similar to the conditions of approval that we put on the church. Farmers Market, just two items ago. And so number four deals with signs, and that is a ground sign shall be permitted along Santa Fe. On that previous item, you wanted that language changed so that it was a temporary sign just for that event, and we could modify that to match if that's something that you would be interested in. And if you have questions on any of the other items, we can go through that. But I'm not going to read them to you since we just went through something similar.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Questions?
Question about the hours on Friday, the first day.
Dustin, do you know the hours?
What's that?
The question regarding hours.
It's 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. is what they're proposing. And we also, I guess, on one, one is a little bit different than the one that we had on the Farmers Market, so we will go through that. But that it would be limited to four vendors, and the four vendors shall be located to match the site plan shown in figures two and three. And that the north row of parking stalls shall be reserved for customer parking, and that food truck vendors and associate activities, including entertainers, artists, and musical performers, shall not spill out into the north driving aisle or north row of parking stalls. With the exception of the north driving aisle, the other driving aisles shall be barricaded or combed off. Again, you could modify that if there's another design that you think of that might be suitable for the site. But our idea was just to limit all of the parking to that north row and keep it simple and block off the other entrances and provide more room for the activities on the site.
Yes. When we had the Masonic, when we did this on Wednesday nights, we had to block off those front ones. And the reason was that all of those things kept creeping forward to the street, which I think you'll find out, because no cars could see any of that coming south from Santa Fe. My booth was right at where it says vegetable. That's where I sold honey, right? And the food truck was off to the top of that, but they had to keep moving closer and closer to the street every single week. All of us did. We just had to keep picking up and moving because people driving by couldn't see around the building. So we closed the front entrances and moved everything forward.
You closed these two entrances?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because a common complaint was that people didn't see it, you know? They couldn't find it because of the building's so big. They could go around the block once they saw it in park or go in those other sides, but the vendors kept moving farther and farther forward. And it was the food truck that actually started the whole migration forward. So that's news from experience. Mr. Bowden, did you want to speak again? Sure. We'd love to hear what you're going to do this time.
James Bowden, 141 South 10th. I'm representing the Salina Innovation Foundation, and we feel that adding a food truck park will help develop the food system and the community culture in the downtown area. And so we hope that you give us a positive recommendation or approval.
Any questions for Mr. Bowden? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, maybe on the sign.
Wait, wait. I'm sorry.
On the sign. Do you want more than a temporary sign?
In that location, I'm not really a supporter of anything more than temporary. I don't know about anyone else, but I don't like the waters one, you know? If it was more than once a month, maybe.
I think it's something that we could put out, you know, for the event, just for that moment.
You could do streamers off the trucks.
Good.
Flag streamer.
Good signage, so people are going to understand.
But I could see you wanting to promote it prior to that evening, too.
Can we attach things, can we attach things to the sign that's already there for the Salina Innovation Foundation? The existing permanent signage?
The marquee or?
For the banner. We, I think we would also ask, you know, just get approval for what the sign would be, but I think we could put a banner, a lot of banners there.
Mary, if you would like to speak, please come to the podium, and that way we can catch you on the mic and people can see you. We, you're kind of behind the post over here for us.
Thank you very much.
Mary Landis, 656A Georgetown Court.
Thank you.
I spend most of my time at 336 South Santa Fe.
Yes, you do.
I'm grateful to all the work that's gone into this. I think our mission is to repurpose this building and use it for the community, and I think this is a great use of that space. It also brings people to the building and brings awareness of what we're trying to do. And I think it's good for the business for the food trucks. It's great exposure for that. We do have a sign out front that has three posts that we could easily put a banner up for the event that is visible from both north and south as people are driving by, and then take that down. We don't have to leave that up all the time, but it could be in advance, maybe a day or so in advance to let people know.
Okay. Because we're going to come up with some conditions of approval, and so just want to make sure it meets your needs.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be, that would be a good.
I mean, if everyone hears for that suggestion. But that would be your preference, is to have a banner that may go up a few days before.
I believe we could do a sandwich board or a feather flag, but we found the Kansas Wind, just anything we put out, it seems like unless it's bungied, we have a hard time with that. So I think that would be a good solution.
And then I don't know if they have to calculate, but.
I was just going to say, we're going to have to calculate sign space and all of that.
Okay.
We spend a lot of time on signage here.
Do you have a reader panel on that sign, or do you have a?
It no longer works. So the sign has gone dark. We put, we stretched a banner across that, and then we've been discussing maybe taking that down since it's gotten a bit weather-beaten. Maybe put something else a bit lower down on the poles. I think we could easily put something that's visible that would promote the event.
So the changeable copy on that is no longer functional?
Correct.
Okay.
So that, can they put banners over the changeable copy sign?
They could put banners over the changeable copy sign and make it manually changeable.
Right. Old school.
Well, then you have quite a bit of sign there.
The way they used to do it.
Yeah. There's quite a bit of sign then there. Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments or anything? No? Thank you, Mary.
Staff, listening to some of Barb's comments and feedback from Mary and the commission here, a ground sign shall be permitted on the week of the event along Santa Fe, which shall not exceed, and then finish that language, but you could add "on the week of the event" if that, if that's helpful. Yeah, or just, yeah, change the ground sign to temporary sign, since it sounds like we're going to put it over the former pole sign. So a temporary sign shall be permitted on the week of the event along Santa Fe Avenue, and then.
Very precise.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak or has comments on this? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing.
What's your pleasure?
I guess, how detailed do we need to get on the parking? Well, I guess your comment about moving to the east from your experience, that, how does that change, number one?
I was assuming that staff was going to handle the site plan.
It can change with experience, right? If people cooperate with you.
It's kind of up to you on what you, what kind of limitations you want or don't want. I mean, our idea was just to block off the south two entrances, to leave all that area as a safe haven for people. You're not competing with vehicles at that point in time. And your driving, parking has a full-through alley where you can get, if you're going through and you find that they're all full, you don't, you're not stuck. You can, you can. You can get out and find another place to park.
That's what was done at the Wednesday night Farmers Market. That's how we handled it, so.
He's talking about like just straight.
Right, right. But these two, when you say the south two, you're talking about the east-facing entrances.
Well, I was also talking about the west, unless you want to come up with another design here with blocking it here and then coming up with a way that you preserve a driving aisle. Because the thing is, you always have to preserve a driving aisle, and that might be confusing if you have parking stalls, because if somebody's pulling in and they see a parking stall, they might just stop. And what happens if everybody parks here and somebody comes in and they can't get out? See what I'm saying?
Right, but my question of Commissioner Good is how is that addressed in these recommendations?
Oh, so the, it says, with the exception of the north driving aisle, this is under one, the very last sentence, with the exception of the north driving aisle, the other driving aisles shall be barricaded or coned off.
Okay. Does that satisfy you then?
Is that okay with you all?
That would make sense to me. I think that you'll find that that's how it will work anyway. Because, I'm sorry, were you making a motion?
I did.
I couldn't hear.
Our motion makers are gone.
You were just asking questions?
I was just asking, but I will.
Okay, okay.
Unless anyone else has any other comments. I move that we approve special use permit 19-4 with the conditions of approval, the seven on page eight, changing, modifying number four to a temporary sign shall be permitted on the week of the event along Santa Fe Avenue.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application SUP 19-4 with the seven staff recommendations, number four being altered to read that the sign will be a temporary sign on the week of the event. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote aye, please. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. It'll be fun.
Yes.
Yeah, great thing. Great thing.
That's good.
Great thing for Salina. Thank you, everybody. We have one more public hearing item, it looks like, which is legislative. Item 3.5, application Z19-4 filed by the Salina City Planning Commission requesting a conference of review and amendment of Section 4269 wireless communications facilities and Section 4270 telecommunication right-of-way users to bring Salina's zoning ordinance into conformance with state law and current FCC regulations. This is continued from our April 2nd meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is not brought to you because it's fun to work on this subject or this subject matter, but we do have interested parties, including Verizon, lined up with some things. One thing that we did learn at the national conferences, sometimes it's better to be late than early because the, one of the presenters was a city that had comprehensively redone their ordinance only to have the FCC pass new regulations that required them to amend them again. I believe that was the city of San Mateo in the Bay Area and was sharing their story. But we have both, I think the Kansas legislatures may or may not be done, but they made some legislative amendments in 2019. They made a further legislative amendment with ZAO, the group that did our small cells in the right-of-way, the city entered into a franchise agreement with them. The legislature eliminated the ability of cities to negotiate franchise agreements with wireless service providers, but we can still do a master license agreement or small-cell deployment agreement because it is our right-of-way. And in 2018, FCC in the fall adopted some additional restrictions on local government authority. Nonetheless, we have not made the progress we had initially hoped when we initiated this, so our recommendation is to postpone the hearing on this or continue it to July 2nd, 2019, to give staff and the city's attorney's office one last chance to prepare a draft for your considerations. So our recommendation is to continue Z19-4 to your July 2nd, 2019 meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to do that?
Is there a move? Second.
In a second? There were several. You can, Mr. Story would be the first on second, first on second.
We missed the first, you know, so.
Mr. Olson.
Olson and Story.
Yes, sir. This is regarding the application Z19-4. It's been moved and seconded to postpone this hearing until our July 2nd, 2019 meeting. All those in favor, vote aye, please. Aye. Any opposed? Of course not. That motion passes. And that brings us to an administrative item, 3.6, which is the application P19-1-1A, which is filed by Gary Gleason of Gleason &amp; Sons Signs on behalf of MacArthur Enterprises. This is a request for approval of a final plat of Long MacArthur Edition Number Two to create a lot for the installation of an advertising sign. This would be at the location of Long MacArthur Ford in Salina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may or may not remember, as a commission in March, you approved a recommendation to change the zoning classification of what we call the KDOT Slip Ramp property that's directly north of Long MacArthur Ford. This property is owned by MacArthur Enterprises. They have reached agreement to allow Blue Beacon International or the Salina 2020 Group to erect an electronic changeable copy sign. The property has been zoned agricultural because it is unplatted, and Section 42A of the zoning ordinance requires that property be platted before any rezoning takes effect. And we attempted to look at the possibility of deferring or waiving the plating requirement. The city attorney indicated that was not an option. So you recommended a change in zoning. The city commission concurred on May 25th. They recommended changing the zoning classification of this tract on first reading, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. So this is essentially a one-lot plat that I think we have a drawing of that, John. So it essentially, the purpose of the plat is to create the surveyed boundaries of this parcel and to provide a utility easement to extend electricity to the proposed sign. It creates a single lot with 1,600 feet of frontage on I-135 and only 252 feet of frontage on Ninth Street. We certainly anticipate that before this property is developed for any form of commercial development, that it will be replatted and reconfigured. So on all the topics, whether it's access, water, sanitary sewer, storm drainage, those items will all be addressed when there's an actual plat for development of the property. This is really more of a surveying exercise. There are some implications for MacArthur Enterprises as it relates to a utility project that the city did back in 1999 to support the Long MacArthur Ford project, and that is something that the city commission will need to address. So we believe this is an order for you to act on and approve, and our recommended conditions that any needed corrections on our punch list be made by the applicant surveyor before properties, the plat is recorded. And then we are recommending that a replat of this property and a drainage study be submitted before any building permits or any development occurring on this lot, except for the installation of a single advertising sign. So our anticipation is that if there's at some point in the future an actual plan for developing this property, what we think is going to happen is that you have this triangle right here. We think that Long MacArthur will probably come in and kind of square this off here and make this a development site, and then add this back portion to their dealership, and this will become squared off. But this is just the accidental boundary because there was an exit ramp that came up here and intersected with Ninth Street, and that's why it looks like that. So our recommendation is to approve this one-lot plat with those two conditions, and it's being done to fulfill the condition in order to get the property rezoned. We don't anticipate what would occur is if you approved this, then the ordinance rezoning the property would go back to the city commission for second reading. There would be no further action that the planning commission would need to take on this property.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Are there questions for staff? Any questions from the applicant? No one else is here? Did you want to speak?
I think those sexy, no reason to.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll close the public hearing. I guess there isn't one on this one. And bring this up here for discussion. And a motion.
I would recommend that we accept this motion as we talked about it last time and with all the conditions.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Where are the conditions actually?
There's just two conditions. Everyone is to make our technical corrections on our punch list. And then the important one is that we're not requiring a drainage study or anything of detail at this time because this is not for building permits or development or putting in streets. This is for installation of a sign. We want to keep it simple.
Well, then the motion is to approve application P19-1/1A with the two staff recommendations. All those in favor, vote aye, please. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir, for coming and listening to a lot of other things. You're a trooper.
Now we know where the food's going to be.
Yeah, now you know all the farmers markets and all of the food trucks. Any new business or other business?
We'll have to check with Dustin, but as far as I know, we don't have any more market vendors that we're trying to accommodate. We're kind of running out of season for that, just for your information. May 20th was the deadline for fireworks stand permits, and it's actually the same, the same process, same type of permit, temporary permit, but because the fireworks stands are for a shorter duration, those are approved, reviewed and approved administratively. But we will work closely to make sure that the Gatter Sweet Corn Market and the fireworks stand can share the same space. We don't limit the total number of permits, special permits, but only one fireworks stand is allowed per parcel. So there's a grassy lot in front of Kmart, vacant Kmart, and I had a question, can you put one in the grassy lot and then also set up one in the parking lot? And the answer is no. You can have one fireworks stand per zoning lot. So those usually go up about June 27th or so, and we have, I think, two fewer applications than we did last year. But we'll, we'll see if that means lesser business overall or more business for the ones that are there. But we will meet on June the 4th. We will meet on June the 18th. We continue to have meetings with our working group on the downtown arts and entertainment ordinance. Our last meeting was on the subject of consumption and sale of alcohol on public property, which was, it almost wears you out to just become familiar with all the ins and outs of that. Much of what we do is governed by the state of Kansas, but events like Feast on the Fay or Seraphin Bread had an event on Spillman Plaza. And so some of those, if they're on public sidewalks or right-of-way, do involve city commission action and staff work. They don't necessarily come to you. The other thing I would note is that we work with the downtown design review board and the city commission on downtown sidewalk dining. We have two approved to date. We have Old Chicago and Blue Sky Brewery have sidewalk dining areas approved. We've had discussions with Martinelli's, with Paramount, with Future Yaw Yaws and Future Starbucks at Mulberry and South Street, and also with the Barolo Grill that's in the 100 block of South Santa Fe, all of which are proposing outdoor or sidewalk dining. So you don't get to see those cases necessarily, but we thought we'd just keep the commission up to date that those things are happening. So you may be seeing them. A lot are waiting till the sidewalks in front of their business are actually not torn up and are going to be in final condition. But there is a lot happening still behind the scenes with downtown activity, and we'll do our best to keep you up to date. But if you have questions, this is a good forum to bring that up. But we will have business for you on June 2nd and June 16th.
Thank you. If there is nothing else, could I have a motion for adjournment?
So make a motion.
I directed it to you, Wally.
Oh, it's before him.
Oh, yeah.
The guy got a brown color shirt on.
So Mr. Olson's made more motions than you have, Wally, so.
And I usually leave adjournment to you. All those in favor, vote aye. Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.